So, welcome to the Westwood Planning Board. It's 7:01. I call the meeting to order. Let us stand in Pledge of Allegiance. Okay, welcome to the Westwood Planning Board meeting. My name is Brian Gorman and I will be chairing this meeting. The meeting is video recorded by Westwood Media Center. If anyone wishes to record the meeting, please identify yourself so the audience is aware, seeing none. As a friendly reminder, please turn off your cellphone ringers. The meeting will be civil and all people will be treated respectfully. So, the format of the meeting will be when an item is called, the applicant will come forward to the podium to present their application to the board. The board will proceed to staff comments. The board members will ask questions of the applicant. For public hearing items, the public will be given an opportunity to comment. Items that are not a public hearing, the opportunity for public comment will be at the discretion of the board. When it is time for the public comment period, the chair will call those wishing to speak to the podium to use the microphone. Once at the podium, please identify yourself by stating your name and address for the record. Please direct all comments and questions through the chair. All individuals will be given an opportunity to speak, but in the interest of time and fairness, repetitive or off-topic comments may be cut short. Abby, are there any changes to the agenda?
No changes to the agenda, but you could also note that one of your members is participating.
That's right. So, Bill Delay, one of the five planning board members, is dialing remotely. So, we sign the appropriate documentation, so he has the ability to vote on topics, and the votes will be done through rolling vote.
Alright, thank you.
Great. So, no changes to the agenda. So, the very first item on the agenda is 45 Clappard Tree Street. This is the Green Company. Performance guarantee for the open space residential development. Special permit approved on April 23rd, 2019.
If you want me to summarize?
Sure.
Back in April, the planning board approved, this is the special permit for the open space residential development. This is for the 40, 55 and over senior housing in the open space areas. One of your conditions was that the applicant provide a performance guarantee, which provides insurance that the services and utilities and infrastructure will be guaranteed with this covenant. The applicant has chosen to do this in the form of covenant. We did receive this about a week or so ago, a week and a half ago. I did review it. It references the final approved plans and is pretty standard language that the owner, the applicant, Westwood Green LLC, must complete the work. And the units cannot be conveyed, all rights cannot be conveyed until the planning board releases each unit or each lot. So, this covenant will protect that the work gets done. So, typically, a covenant is the first form that will come before you. So, I don't have any other issues with this, and it was reviewed by town council, and we did not get any concerns or comments from him.
Okay. And does the, would the applicant like to speak? Thanks.
I'm Dan Green. I'm president of the Green Company. And just to further what Abby said, we're asking for permission to pull building permits before the infrastructure is complete. We want to get started this fall with the homes and get the foundations in and get them framed, so that we can begin the sales process in the spring. And we're going to put in as much of the infrastructure as we can this year. We're thinking that we'll get, if it goes really well, we will be able to pave everything, but we'll probably get about half of it done, most likely, given the, it just depends on the timing of winter. We won't, the covenant essentially says that we won't close or sell any homes until we've done the infrastructure. And then, the thought is, if we get to the point where we're ready to sell some homes and the infrastructure isn't quite done, we'll convert to a letter of credit or a bond, something with cash in there. But this allows us to get to that point.
And town council was fine with this?
Yes.
Okay.
Do you have, I have a site plan if you want to see it. I don't know if most of you have seen it, but whatever you'd like.
Abby, did you say we have, it has to be released each unit?
Before all the rights for any individual lots.
Is it done administratively by you, or are we going to hear about each sale?
No. You would have, if you want to, is that usually before you sell?
I think what we'll do is, before we convey the first unit, we'll come back and say, we'd like to put up a bond, and then there'll be a release, and it's how we structure that. You don't want us to come back and, we love it here, but we don't want to come back either.
How many units?
Forty.
Forty.
Well, two are affordable, so thirty-eight.
You'd like it.
It's typical that a covenant would be the first guarantee, and then as a project moves forward in phases, and certain lots may be released in phases, so at a time, and then a performance, maybe a tri-party agreement or a bond is typical. And then you would essentially cover the remaining work at that point.
And I'd also like to be very clear that this is on the open space residential parcel, so this is on the forty homes, forty townhomes that are age restricted. There are six A&R lots that were created as part of this, but that's not part of this agreement, because they have frontage on existing streets and conform to all the guidelines for town.
Abby, if it's converted to a tri-party agreement or bond, does that need to be put in the conditions, or is that just?
They would have to come back to you to do that.
There's a condition that they have to have a security level to make sure the infrastructure is complete, so this is phase one of that, try to track our type of agreement in the next phase, but you'll always be covered, so we won't have a repeat of some bad results. We'll ensure that the work is completed before the units are sold.
So, this kind of sets the, this is sort of the most extreme. This basically says if you don't, the assumption we start from is if you don't complete the work, then you can't sell any of the homes. But it's likely that you'll come back to us and say, we're close, and we just need to do this much work, and we'll say, okay, that work will cost so much, we'll need a bond, and then we'll ensure that and allow you to move forward.
Yes, exactly.
Bill, do you have any questions on the phone?
No.
Okay. So, are there any other comments or questions from board members? Are there any questions or comments from the public? So, anything else we need to do with this, Abby, or just move for a motion?
You should make a motion, have a suggested motion here in your page one, to accept this covenant as sufficient means for a performance guarantee to sufficiently cover the construction of the ways and utility services for the OSRD special permit.
Okay.
I make a motion to accept the covenant as sufficient means for a performance guarantee to sufficiently cover the construction of the ways and utility services for the OSRD special permit approval at 45 Clappard Street.
I'll second that.
So, we have a motion and a second, so we'll be going by roll call. So, Dave?
Aye.
Deb?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And aye for me as well, so the motion passes. Five.
Alright, do you mind if I pass it around for signature, so that, and then, oh, do you need, oh, Brian, do you also have your license?
I do. Yep. And do we need to close, is it a hearing that we need to close?
Nope, it's not a hearing.
Okay. How are you tonight?
Thanks.
Yep.
Is that the name, Westwood Green?
That's going to be the entity, the home, the buyer.
Oh, do we have a working title?
Not yet, but we will, that's on the list.
Meeting rights are available.
Alright, thanks. Did you give, where did Suzanne, oh, she wanted to make copies. Did you give Suzanne a license?
Yeah.
Okay.
So...
Sure.
Signature is there?
Yep.
So, what about Mr. Delay? Is he going to do a separate one for you?
No.
Or is he going to come in and see you, or?
No, I took him off of here, so I'll have him in the vote, but he won't sign it. Yeah. Just a blank. Sorry, Suzanne, it ran off into the next page. I think with the place where you used, sorry, sorry. And then, you'll record this at the registry of deeds and return the recorded copy to us?
Yes. Give it to us back here.
Or at least, if I have the recording information, so then.
Abby, the, Abby, the document I signed last week, that I had watched the video, it still pertains to Anthony's, right?
No, because it's not a public hearing, so.
It's not a hearing, okay.
But it's okay if you miss it, because it's not a hearing.
Okay. I told Brian I have to recuse myself for the Pulte thing.
Oh, okay. Oh, yeah, let's, okay. Oh, the next one, okay. Alright, thank you so much.
Great, thank you.
Thank you for staying.
Thank you, Suzanne.
Thank you, guys, take care.
Thank you.
So, next on the agenda is Agenda Item 2, University Station, Pulte Homes of New England, request to extend temporary use of sales trailer.
Due to a personal conflict, I have to recuse myself from this particular.
Good evening.
How are you?
I'm great. For the record, Mark Mestriani, here representing Pulte Homes of New England. We're the builder of Westwood Place out at University Station. The request tonight is for some additional time to utilize our temporary sales trailer and signage, marketing signage. I was here a year ago, back in August of 2018, and the board approved. We went through a bigger packet of information of what the sales trailer would look like and why we needed it, and the board granted a one-year, basically a one-year approval to utilize the sales trailer with, with the requirement that I come back, you know, prior to August of this year, to give you an update and to ask, and if needed, to ask for more time. So, I'm here with an update. So, there's 100 total homes at Westwood Place. That's being built by Pulte Homes, in two buildings. Each building has 50 units. So, Building 1, which is closest to the train tracks, has 43 homes that are sold, and seven remain, that are, seven remain for sale. And we, the building is pretty much complete. We're going through our final punch lists now and our occupancy permit requirements and checklists with, with Abby's involved, and certainly building and all the other department heads. We hope to start closing units the first week of August, so a week from now. And then, the second building is well under construction, exactly as planned in our permitting process. There's 26 sold in that building, so there's 24 remaining, and that's the one closest to the park, and that's well under construction proceeding, you know, as planned. Our expectation is to finish that building this fall/winter and start closing homes there in November, early December. So, so that's sort of an update, and, you know, I'm here to ask a request for another extension of the use of the temporary sales trailer, so that we can continue the success and continue the sales of Westwood Place.
Great. Abby, are there any comments from the staff that are associated with this?
No further comments. I know, just as Mark mentioned, a year ago, you looked at this and you wanted to check in within a year to see how their sales and construction timing was going. So, right now, they're on track, and they're looking to hopefully open within the next week for the first building, and then they look to be on track for that second building before the end of the year.
Okay, great, thanks. And then, what were the conditions from the previous one? Was it, was it, was it, within a year, we talked about the location of the sign, and then the trailer itself?
Let me just pull up the decision here. They, you had them paved the lot. That was one of the conditions, and for some low-impact development, I think, and to address some stormwater with some swales. So, that was one of your conditions from a year ago. So, I, they did provide, provide that at that time, so last August, I had gone out and taken a look at it.
Okay.
It's just not coming up right.
And then, what is the extension that you're looking for, another year?
I would actually ask for six months.
Okay.
But that puts us at February 7th, because the, the current approval expires on August 7th, and February 7th is not a great time to be removing the trailer. It would be frozen in the middle of winter. So, you know, if we just add, if we use kind of round numbers and add an extra three months to that, it would be February, March, April, May, May 7th. So, that would be a nine-month extension, and, you know, we will fully expect to be fully done, complete and sold out by them, and that would provide enough time so that I wouldn't have to come back, you know, the end of this year and do this again.
And I find it visually okay. Do you have any, any additions that you, when you see it?
Yep, I think it looks okay. I know a year ago, I think we had talked about maybe some concern about what's happening at that corner. We don't, we haven't heard of anything, because Pulte doesn't own that corner. It's on the adjacent lot, which is owned by New England Development. But they've worked with Pulte to make arrangements if needed, if someone else needed that site, that they could go forward.
That's right. We have a license agreement with them.
And then, Deb, do you have any questions?
So, you're looking for nine months, then?
Yes, yeah.
Dave?
I'm curious if you have the affordable, how the, have the affordable units been sold, or kind of, was there a lottery, or kind of what's the status of those?
So, that's a great question. So, the affordable units are behind, then what otherwise would typically have been done? There was our marketing agent, under unfortunate circumstances, became ill, so we had to switch marketing agents. And anyways, at this time, the DHCD approvals are all complete. That was actually one of the requirements of the occupancy permit. And the lottery is scheduled for September 24th. It's been advertised in the paper. And, and the good news is, we already have a list of over 50 people. I've actually heard upwards of 100 people that have inquired about obtaining information. So, there's 10 affordable units. The lottery is this September. We fully expect to commence lottery, go through all the necessary paperwork, getting them approved, and moving those folks in this year as well, so completing the affordable units and selling them and occupying them this year. It's a little behind schedule. The lottery should have happened a few months ago, but, but it, that's where we're at.
Anything else, Dave?
Nope.
And Bill, do you have any questions or comments?
No, no.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I think the, the trailer, the way it was used before, I think it was done pretty well, and it's nice to see those units selling. That's great.
Yeah, it's been very successful. We're very pleased.
The buildings look nice.
Thank you.
There are any questions or comments from the public? Okay, so... Yeah, what is the?
I didn't draft one, but I should just say to extend it to, and then specify the date, I don't know.
So, nine months from today? Is that what you had said? Because six months brings you into the middle of the winter, so to pull it apart.
So, went to August 7th.
May 7th is fine.
I make a motion to extend the temporary use for the sales trailer until May 7th of 2020.
I have a motion. Do we have a second?
I have a second.
We have a motion and a second, so we're going to be doing a roll call. So, Dave?
Aye.
Deb?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And aye for me as well. So, the motion passes, four positive votes.
Okay, thank you.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And the third item on the agenda, and... That's not a hearing, so we don't need to close that, Abby?
Right.
Okay. Third item on the agenda, 119, University Ave, Anthony's Coal Fired Pizza, the request for project-specific signage, alternative for window screening and signage. How are you today?
I'm great. How you guys doing?
Doing great, thanks.
Good. So, yeah, just, I was here about a month ago. I know you guys had requested some samples of it, which I heard got to you, so that's fantastic. Just to summarize one more time, what we're looking to do, we currently have three windows with, that are shallow with pictures behind them, all street view. Over time, the pictures have become dilapidated, began to fall apart. This has actually happened a few times, so what we're looking to do to kind of permanently solve the problem is just put a vinyl wrap over them. As you can tell by the pictures, the windows don't actually face into the building, they're just little shallow interiors with some, you know, brand-type pictures inside of them. So, the wraps would be similar in style, they wouldn't have any logos or advertising on them, they would just be, you know, stock photos that we have to cover up the photos that are currently in there.
Great. Anything else?
Um, no. Nothing new since last time.
And then, Abby, anything additional from, from your staff?
Yes, so I just wanted to summarize why the applicant's here. The reason this is before you and why the windows look the way they do now, is that your zoning bylaw for this section, University Ave, the overlay district, it allows for window signs, but they can't be more than 20% coverage of all the glass for one establishment. So, it's looking at all the glass of the whole building, not just one pane. So, they are allowed to have 20%, and then, and that's for if it's intended to represent what's being sold, kind of, if it's advertising. If it's not having to do with the business, it's considered a screen, a window screen display. And that's the last couple that have come to you, or at least one that I remember is Lifetime Fitness. They installed a window screen, so it had the coverage, but it was of a tree branch design, so it wasn't having to do with the facility, the youth gym. And then, Chipotle had like, they did write Chipotle on it and had a pepper, but then there was also a kind of a white dotted material, and it was, both were affixed to the glass. So, it was a larger coverage, but it wasn't strictly advertising. So, this is before you for two reasons. It's affixed to the glass, and with these images reflects the advertising of the establishment. And then, one of the requirements, I think the way it was before, is the planning board also wanted their, originally wrote the bylaw this way to have more of a depth. So, they wanted to encourage storefronts, so that windows weren't just blocked, and then also have that depth into the window. So, it wasn't just allowing material to be directly on to the windows. They liked this, this look with the images kind of set back behind the window. So, my, my recommendation would be to reduce the amount of overall advertising, so that it would comply, so it's not over that 20%.
And when you say that, so you're referring to, so if you look at the top-left image, what would that look like in your mind, so if it's reduced for the advertising portion that you're speaking of?
Is, it's pretty much all advertising, so you would have to remove most of it, or leave the sides of that open?
If they used regular pictures, though, that weren't advertising, they could do that size, or no?
Yeah, a little bit more. So, that's why in the existing photos, they have like the celebrities, because it's not advertising that they're pizza or restaurant. But I think in this case, I think in the past, the board did spend a couple meetings getting this layout too, because they liked that it was not directly on the window.
Yeah, and it does give that depth, which is...
Well, you see that in other establishments down at University Ave. They made a point of pulling things back. I know Panera has one, but it's set back. Blue Hill Bank, they made a point of that TV signage is set back a certain distance. So, the setback was a key component to the window displays when we wrote the bylaw.
Right, I think Target as well, and Target and David's Bridle had some.
Right, Targets, it's all set back. So, I understand why the applicant wants to do that, but it does change the intent of that bylaw. I noticed, I was down there, you have three windows in that area. You're only proposing to put two vinyl wraps?
No, so two of them are the same size. There is a third picture of the other large window. One of them is directly on the street side, and one is on the side when you drive in.
Two of them are on that driveway.
Correct. The big one, one of the big ones and the small one are on the driveway. That's the one on the driveway.
Right.
It's in the worst shape, just due to the proximity of our dish area as well, which is right behind that wall. It's a mixture of the sunlight and the humidity coming from behind it have just warped all the photos that are in there.
And that, it, if I understand, if I remember correctly, that was a, kind of a speck building, and you guys moved in, and you didn't need the use of these windows, so you've covered them.
Correct.
Back behind. So, if you had the opportunity at design, you may have not created windows there at all.
Correct, in a perfect world.
Yeah. So, Abby, can you reiterate again your, your thought on the 20% reduction of these items to 20%? So, you're, you're contending that each of the images we're looking at, the guy throwing the pizza dough in the air, is to be considered advertising for the pizza? Anthony's Coal Fired Pizza. And, so it's 20% of the total glass in the establishment?
Right.
And in doing these three, considering that they're all, I don't, I don't have a visual of all the rest of the glass, are you saying that that would put them over the 20%?
Yes, still over the 20%. There is some, there is more windows.
Yeah, I know they have that, the outside eating area and the parking lot, and then, I don't know about the outdoor seating. There's glass there.
Right, I think there is glass there.
There's glass there, and then there's a few windows on the front side of the building, there are a bar, and then on the dining room side as well.
Right.
Should I think, I think we have an elevation. I think we have an elevation.
Now, Chris, you were on the board at the time of all this, so a good amount of time was put into the decision for that depth window to make it look a little-
Yeah, it was, it did come up a lot, that that depth was a key element in trying to prevent people from just throwing things up and then taking them down and throwing them up and taking them down for sale this week on shoes, or sale this week on whatever. So that depth was there anticipating more of a permanent display, not signage.
Do you need to go back to company to discuss the reduction?
If that's what you guys are deciding, then yes, I would need to go, first I would need to go back to my corporate office and have them redesign the proposed wrap, and then we'd have to, I'd assume, resubmit it through.
What if, what if they were to put that design behind the glass in some way, like instead of just being sticking on there?
Up against the wall directly?
Yeah, because I mean, I went down there too, and I looked at everything, and frankly, I think what they're proposing is better than what they had before. And I see the other businesses, like Starbucks has an entire wall with their name on it and a bunch of coffee beans. GameStop is probably 75% of the window is covered with posters about video games and stuff. The, it's inconsistent. Chipotle, yes, there's an entire wall with the word Chipotle on it, and it's kind of behind the glass, though. So I don't, I think that the picture frames behind that glass, it looks shabby, like I mean, what's there now? I mean, maybe because they faded too, but, I mean, I think they're, I think what they're proposing is an improvement, but maybe to get that depth and all, and to be consistent with Starbucks and Chipotle, maybe they could take that design and put it behind the glass or something. And it's, men's warehouses, you know, it's like all their stores, there's like mannequins and stuff in the window, it's not open to the store, really. It's like a display that advertises the store.
Well, I think also one of the things that's a little bit different from here than the Starbucks that you referenced, and I saw that and I actually took some pictures of that. There's a lot of verbiage on what they're proposing, and Starbucks, it's, yeah, so it's, it does present a little bit different. When you have words, it is conveying something much less subtle, much less subliminal than the coffee beans.
So I tend to, I tend to agree with Abby on this one, and I'm not sure how to get around the being set back versus directly applied. I'd like to remain consistent down there, because there's a lot of companies down there, and there's going to be new companies coming in with different ideas for signage. As one company leaves, another one's going to come in, and I'd like this board to be consistent, the town to be consistent as to how it addresses signage down there.
Yeah, I'm inclined to continue with what the previous board agreed with, with keeping the depth. I think it does look, I think it looks better than despite all the crime.
So it would be a proposed redesign as well as putting it directly on that wall behind it? The big concern also, like I said, it's the cost. I mean, granted, if we were doing a wrap behind it, it would be a one-time expense in theory. It's the cost to remove the glass.
And put it back in runs fairly high, just because, you know, I mean, those are unfortunately just regular windows. It's not, there was no access door or anything like that installed when they originally did it.
Yeah.
Um, yes.
Unfortunately.
And you said there's nothing but a wall behind there?
Correct. I believe, as Chris had said, I think originally those were full windows, and then when we had taken on the lease, I think we put up walls behind it, because behind there is our prep kitchen, which is, I mean, there's one window in the back, but that's about it.
You could have kitchen as theater, if people-
It's funny, if you've seen our Natick store, that's actually what they did. Their prep kitchen is now in the front of the restaurant. It's part of our new designed restaurants, which fit more into what the window wraps are. They had the whole prep kitchen's wide open in the front of the restaurant.
Well, I think more than anything, this board just wants to remain consistent so that we don't have a completely different look, one building or one storefront to the next. I've asked Abby to read the point in the bylaw that talks about the setback in the windows, and I frankly, I remember the spirit of it, I don't remember the actual words, so.
So in the bylaw, it defines window signs as signage consisting of letters, numbers, symbols, logos, emblems, or graphic representations, painted on, incorporated to, or affixed to either side of the glass surface of a window or door, designed to be visible from the exterior of the building or structure, and located within five feet of the interior of such glass surface. So anything within five feet that's visible, intended to be visible.
Within five feet of the inside of the glass, or the outside?
This is within five feet of the interior side of the glass.
Okay, so you have up to five feet to be considered signage or window display, and then inside five feet, one inch, it's considered interior display?
Well, then the next definition below that is window screen display, that's graphic or display which is intended to reduce visual access to the interior of the establishment, but without representing what the facility or the use is. So the, some examples of, let's see, I think what, Chipotle's, I just had this, I had this photo from during the time of construction. See, they had this white area, and it says Chipotle there.
And that's their kitchen area, right?
Yes.
I remember that.
And then there was the Lifetime. So Lifetime, this is the, just a display.
It was more of a privacy shield, I'd imagine.
Yeah. They did that because they didn't realize how ugly it was to look at their neighbor. They did, they said they didn't realize at the time of design what our members were going to be looking at. And there's four windows there, they only put it on the two middle ones. The two outside ones don't have that put on.
I'm just curious, could the wall come down?
Right behind it, we have plumbing and our dish machine, so you wouldn't, it wouldn't be a pretty sight either. I think you need to see the dish machine when you drive in.
And then Bill, do you have anything that you'd like to share?
Oh, yeah, yeah, Starbucks, how deep is there sign? I know it's not on the window, but how deep is that?
It's within that five feet.
Yeah, it's definitely not five feet back.
Okay.
Chris is looking for a photo that you took today.
There's a pic, one other picture.
I was thinking if we put a time restriction on this sign, obviously they'd want to, I would think, from a marketing standpoint, from whatever. Replace it from time to time, if we put a time restriction on the window, something like that, of what they're proposing.
It sounds like what the members here are concerned about is like staying consistent within university so that we, that depth was done intentionally, and it is consistent across a number of the storefronts.
It hasn't been, it hasn't been forced, obviously, it's consistent, because obviously Starbucks is-
Well, theirs is on the inside.
We don't, Starbucks-
It's five feet back on the inside.
It's not-
I wasn't aware of any violation there. We've been consistently enforcing the signage, and when we see it, when we know about it, hence, I haven't seen Starbucks-
So any violations the town has seen, have they've addressed it? Is that what you're saying, thus far?
It's either come to the planning board for special approval, or to my knowledge, the businesses were in compliance, but I haven't gone out recently and done enforcement.
So the trigger here, really, is the 20%?
It's the 20%, yeah.
Any thoughts on the pictures, anyone?
The pictures on the proposal?
Yeah.
And how much over the 20% is it?
It's designed to cover the entire window.
Yes.
Oh, no, I meant the total glass.
So these three, you're probably-
Probably still like 70% or so?
Maybe a little under, I mean, it's only three windows there.
You're at least at 50%.
Yeah, it would be about, we'll call it half, I think that's fair.
Yeah.
Is there space between like, so existing windows where those picture frames are, like is it, is there room, like are they separated, or is there space behind?
The only way to get into those windows is to have a window company come in, remove the glass, and go back there, which I believe before I got there, they've done a few times, because I think this is a recurring problem, which is why we're looking to hopefully solve it.
What if you replace the images in the proposed vinyl decal with similar images that you had in pictures there, not people eating pizza?
I mean, my concern, I don't know from a licensing standpoint, to be honest with you, we'd probably have to look into that to make sure we have the licensing for those pictures, because we don't own those images, whereas the ones on the, on the proposed wrap are images that our corporate obviously owns that they've used for either advertising or the new designs of their restaurants.
Just a thought, because then I think it would not be considered as part of the 20%. So you could gain back all of that space around the sign that says hand-crushed tomatoes.
Yeah, I'd imagine the only issue, like I said, would probably be licensing. I don't know, just throwing that out there.
Yeah, I know.
Because it's not a bad idea, like, you know, to stick with the old design that we had, just-
And I don't know, yeah, because I know that there are signs on other businesses that don't meet the 20%, and there's no issue with them. So I think the issue is the interpretation that all of the images are selling pizza.
Understood.
Whereas the picture of Elvis, not selling anything.
Sells Elvis.
Yeah, it's Elvis, but you don't sell Elvis, so.
Not yet, okay. Yeah, no, I'm assuming that our corporate just chose those images, like I said, due to the fact that they own all of them, and that they've actually, like I said, if you go to our Natick store, they actually have a wall on the interior that uses similar images, marketing, you know, layout theme, et cetera.
And what is the board's pulse on the applying it to the glass versus keeping the depth? Chris, it sounded like you were keeping consistent with the previous decisions with the board to keep the depth, so it would-
Yeah, ultimately, I like the look of the separation, having some depth to it. I would prefer that, and given, I believe, as I understood how you read it, that's the intent of our window display bylaw down there.
That's the, that is, I'd like to stay consistent with that as well. Does other board members have?
Yeah, I think like what Starbucks and Chipotle have large signs, but they're, because they're behind the glass, it kind of reduces the appearance, whereas this looks like a stick-on kind of thing. So that's what I was thinking, if you were able to get those pictures of, you know, the pizza-type pictures and all, if that was similar to where the coffee beans are in behind there, it would be more consistent versus all stuck on the surface kind of thing. So I don't know, that's why I was wondering if there's a way to, is there space between, like if that Elvis picture, if you were to slide that over to the side, do you run into a pole, or does it continue to slide behind there? So they could put a single image behind all those panes?
I believe the wall stops when the window stops. I think they were just put up to, I mean, I haven't, like I said, there's no access on the inside to get back there.
You meant, do you mean like does the pane go all the way back so you can slide? I think it's, I think it just comes all out, straight out the window.
The current, the current thing is problematic, I think, because of like frames behind frames. It just, it just looks, it doesn't look great. But I think if you took the idea of the design and then put that behind the glass somehow, but not like in a separate-
So putting a wrap on the wall where the pictures are currently hung, hypothetically?
I think hypothetically-
I think that still solves the same issue, which, I mean, granted, it would be a little costly to get it back there, but hypothetically, that would be a one-time expense to put it there. I think it would last longer than the picture frames have, my understanding of how the wrap works, but I'm not entirely sure.
I agree with Chris, though. I'm not a big fan of the, all the pizza ones, pictures.
If you switch some out, you start decreasing the percent?
Yeah, I don't know what the solution is, frankly, right off, I don't have a, but I think we do, the 20% is an issue, at least from my perspective. I can't speak for the rest of the board, and my preference would be to see it remain at the depth that it is now. If you can find a way to reduce the percentage and get it on there, that would be far more favorable from my perspective.
When you say reduce the percentage, do you mean of what we would be putting on the windows themselves, or of just the amount of food that we're using? Or, I'm just trying to make sure I have a good idea of what you guys are asking for.
I actually, I like the idea of the celebrity image, that concept, I like that more than I like those other images of people eating or making pizza. I don't know. It conveys more of an image than just come eat here.
Right.
So I personally like that. I know it's up to you guys to decide how you want to market your business, but given that the images are in conflict or creating a conflict with our bylaw, it seems like that's the thing to try to alter.
No, and I totally understand that. I know from our corporate marketing's standpoint, they're trying to more gradually make the transition into the new branding that they've been rolling out. So like I had mentioned, Natick, for instance, looks completely different than our store, whereas if you were to go to our other locations in New England, they all have similar themes with those types of pictures and the certain layout. The newer stores, they're kind of steering away from that. So I think that's why with the new design they went for, they're trying to transition it more towards what they're calling Anthony's 2.0, as opposed to the original design, which you see on the right.
Right. But the original design didn't conflict with our bylaw.
Right.
The new one.
Oh, no, of course.
And I, Natick doesn't have clearly an issue with-
And they have, I'm sure they had issues with different things, and I'm sure, different city, different town, different bylaws, exactly.
So I'm all for trying to make it look better and nice.
Right, that's the overall goal. I mean, no matter what we end up doing, it's an eyesore. It's definitely not a good first impression for the plaza or people coming in or anything like that, so.
And just another observation, since we're talking about the image, you have a bench there with a place for cigarettes, and that's where people go have a break. And they sit out there, that's what people see when they first drive into university, is people sitting on a bench having a cigarette, so. I know it's not illegal, I'm just saying it doesn't strike me as the best place to put a-
The issue was, the bench was originally on the front side of the restaurant near the patio, and I actually had a guest complain, not because of one of my staff members, because another guest was sitting on the bench smoking, and the smoke went right in the patio, and I got a-
No, I-
Yeah, it's a lose-lose. I don't smoke myself, so if it were up to me, I would just throw it in the woods and get rid of it.
Frankly, I didn't even see it until I drove by, and I pulled over to take a closer look.
It's one of those things, if you're not looking for, you probably wouldn't catch, but it's-
Well, it just looks like a bench, and then you sit, you see it, and then you see people taking a break.
Yeah.
So is there a way that we can get the exact calculation of what the percent is? Because it's, it sounds like it's around 50%. I think the board would like to get this down. I would like to see it kept within that 20, if there's a, if there's a way to switch out some of those photos, that brings it down. It sounds like the board is also interested in keeping that depth look.
So you'd want the wrap applied directly to the wall behind it if we stick with the wrap idea? Just, yeah.
Yeah.
Because I mean, the photos, we could always go back in there and replace them, which was our original idea, but like I said, it's happened so many times now where my fear is that in a year from now, we'll be having the same conversation of, oh, we got to replace the photos again.
Yeah, and maybe there's, and maybe there's another solution altogether where you don't need to replace those photos as often.
It's just the way it's set up, I mean, with the sun beating on it from one side, and like I said, the dish machine being right behind it creates humidity from behind, which I'm sure doesn't help the whole, that's why that one right there is the worst one of the three of them, because that one is directly behind our dish machine, whereas the other two are a little further away.
So that vinyl wrap is intended to be on the outside of the window?
Correct. So I'm not sure-
In theory, it should be able to handle all moisture and sunlight.
Exactly. That's why the vinyl wrap-
Regardless of where it's placed.
Of course, the vinyl wrap is a better option than the pictures, is basically what I'm getting at there. So no matter what we do, I think the vinyl wrap is the direction we want to go in with it. It's just whether it's on the outside of the window, the inside of the window, I'm sure.
So do you have enough information to go back and talk to your marketing team?
Yeah, we can definitely reconvene and try to come up with a better idea for it.
Sounds like a redesign, with lowering the percentage related to the advertising, staying more in keeping with the depth that the planning board is looking for. And so just a revise, and then also with the, an estimate on the percentage of how much when you redesign.
Yeah, and if you could shoot me an email again like last time, that'd be phenomenal as well. I can kind of get the ball rolling on it too, just to see what we can figure out there.
And Abby, how would you, with the percentage, like, so what if they, if they took the existing wrap, those individual images, and shrank them, and then it was just like solid behind? Is that reducing the percentage, or what if they put up, you know, a whole square with color?
Yes.
Image which is-
Yes, so I think the percentage, the 20% is related to advertising for the related business. So like the Lifetime tree branches, that wasn't considered part of that percentage. That was still-
Because it's not advertising?
Yes, because it wasn't advertising. So I think if you, if you reduce the images in the wording related to Anthony's, and then if there is maybe some kind of other design unrelated to what the business sells, I think that could be considered a window screen.
So does it make, so in other words, like, so the wording is obviously advertising, a picture of a pizza, because they sell pizza, you're going to consider that advertising? The guy making the pizza, so it would have to be like lifestyle images or something, or smiling people or something totally?
Sometimes you see pictures of-
Inanimate objects.
Yeah, or of town or something, you know, you've seen pictures of Westwood or pictures of the university or something, yeah.
What is that, Fenway Park, or?
Fenway, I think there's an Avery Bradley picture in there, it's also-
Bill, you had something to say? Bill, you had something to say?
Yeah, if they, if they keep the signage to less than 20%, they don't need our approval at all?
Right.
Yeah, that's right. Yes.
In other words, if they had a sign like this and they shrunk it down to less than 20% and then put tomatoes all around it, they can put that up?
Potentially.
Tomatoes.
Without our approval. I'm just saying, can they do that without our approval? They can do that.
They could do grapes. Sell wine, right?
Sell wine, there you go.
People who like grape pizzas.
You're, the, the spirit of what you're saying is true, Bill.
Now, just so I know, the 20% rule, what applies to 20% per each window or is it 20% of the total window?
The total glass for Anthony's.
So if I were to cover one window completely, but I had five, four or five other windows that weren't covered.
So we should check the other windows that aren't covered.
What if you took, I don't have an idea for this one, but if this whole image just went in here and the rest is just black?
Exactly.
And that way you gain that.
Yeah, so that's what, that's what Dave was just.
Comply more with the percentage.
This would be smaller font, it may not be seen from as far a distance, but I'm just thinking out loud, and I don't have an answer for that to go on there, I don't know how you do that. But I'm just thinking out loud, I don't.
It would also work if those other spaces, they could be blank or they could be pictures of, of Westwood or something, right? Like as long as it wasn't related to the.
And do you need a, so you have your marketing team, I just want to make sure that you have enough information. It sounded like we've done some good brainstorming for you.
Yeah, correct. I mean, my understanding is Abby will send me an email probably tomorrow, so I can, including them on it, we can kind of go from there and figure something out, whether it's keeping it under the 20% or coming up with an idea that kind of falls in both categories. But it seems to me like putting it on the wall is what you guys would prefer, which I'm sure we can come up with something that works for that.
Well, one positive thing to that, there's no vandalism to the vinyl decal, if it's inside.
Hey, you can't, you can't mess up what you can't touch, so.
No, so Abby, do we need to continue the hearing? How, how does this go for the?
It's not a hearing, so you can just come back when you're ready. The next planning board's meeting is August 13th.
Yes, we'll figure something out.
It's three weeks from now.
We'll reach back out when we have kind of something planned or whatever, and we'll go from there.
Great.
All right, thank you.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you guys very much.
Thank you very much.
Okay. So next item on the agenda, item four is open space recreation plan, continued public hearing.
Yes, so last week we did get a letter from the state, a conditional letter of approval. They did have several comments and requests for edits and updates to the plan. I looked at that today, I don't know if you had a chance, it was uploaded in your packet. I think it will take some time to pull everything together. So I would recommend continuing to your September 17th meeting, to make sure we have time to pull some items together. What is it, 13th? Then I was thinking 17th. I think we'll need to the September 17th meeting.
I make a motion to continue the public hearing to Tuesday, Tuesday, oh, yeah, September 17th at 50 Carby Street at 7:00 PM.
Can we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and second, so in rolling order, so Dave?
Aye.
Deb?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And aye for me as well, so five yeses, so it's a motion to move.
Thank you.
And then item number five, summer and fall work plans, so the comprehensive plan update, the liaison reports, and town meeting discussion.
All right, so the comprehensive plan, groups are starting to get together, trying to get together. So the last couple of weeks, each of the groups are trying to set up a time to meet with, with you and each of the two members. I know we've had some emails going back and forth. Natural and cultural resources, Bill is on that, they're meeting on Tuesday night next week. Economic development, Chris and Peter are meeting on Monday. And I think sustainability, Dave and Peter and Pam are hoping to meet next week.
August 1st, I think.
August 1st was a date thrown out, so I know we're still.
Yeah, I didn't reply back to all, so I didn't want to.
Okay, not yet. Okay, we can schedule meetings. I reply all without.
Just don't talk about content.
But we can schedule meetings. But if not, I can, I've been coordinating as well. So if you don't mind, if you, it's okay if you want to reply all just to coordinating the meeting, but if not, I can coordinate it through the meeting. So we're hoping in the next couple of weeks, trying to get together with each of the committees so that they can review all the material they have so far. And I'm working on trying to get out data and then update the existing conditions and background sections of the plan so that the committee members can start working on some draft goals. Because my recommendation would be trying to have at least a draft by early September for the steering committee to meet again as a group after Labor Day. And then I think they would like to have a public open house information session where people could come in and talk to them in an informal way. And then they'd like to start coming to planning board meetings. So that would be trying to look at scheduling your September and October and November meetings, depending on what we have, but, you know, one or two items at a time to present their overall findings and their recommendations throughout the fall. So I think that's what we're looking at, timeline, timeframe wise.
That's good. Any comments from board members?
Nope.
Okay, great.
All right, and then also.
Some of that's good. And then town meeting, is there going to be a town meeting? When does the, when the selectmen don't decide until September?
September usually. I think the charter says mid or by late September. I forget exactly what the timeframe is, but we usually know in September if they're going to have town meeting. So usually you would, by your August meeting, you would want to decide what you're going to submit. So that I would usually turn around in August, you know, at the end of August, submit that to the warrant before the warrant closes. The warrant usually closes in, at one of the September meetings. And then right around that time, you would have, still have to schedule your public hearing. For Ag, October 1st would be the meeting date.
So, because I don't want to miss any of the dates, if there were anything to bring forward. So should we just plan for the next planning board meeting, that if anybody has warrant articles that they were, that came up to bring? And I would also ask for the board members to have it as flushed out as possible so that we have some, some meat on the bone.
Right, you would want, any zoning articles, you would want to know what they are for your August meeting. Because then I would soon, usually around Labor Day, around that timeframe, I would have to submit it to the warrant and put the advertisement in the newspaper, and that's where we direct them to the website and to town hall where they can review a complete copy of the zoning. So you don't have to have final language, but it needs to be enough that the full legal public hearing notice captures what you're doing. So you need to have a good understanding of what you're doing by the end of August. I'm not proposing any zoning amendments right now, because I think we have a lot with some of the other recent projects in town, some of the construction projects, and then with the comprehensive plan. I think the summer and fall is the best time for the planning board and the steering committee to work on that.
Yeah, so, so you don't have any, so if any of the board members have any, just, we'll have as an agenda item for the next meeting, and can we talk about?
When would final language have to be done, generally speaking? Mid-October?
October 1st would be your public hearing. So that's when you would ask for any comments. And then right after that meeting, you would submit it to the Finance and Warrant Commission. Finance and Warrant Commission hearing is October 15th, I want to say, October 15th. So that's the big one where the planning board goes to and the Finance and Warrant goes to. So you would definitely need it by early October, but for, usually maybe by the first week in September. Around Labor Day, you want to have, you don't have the ability to change the legal, add more than.
But I'm just thinking, that gives us three meetings, one in August, two in September, to identify and draft final language for a warrant article.
Right, well, but when it goes in the newspaper in early September, it needs to be covered enough of.
Right, you have to have at least a blanket idea.
Yeah, so you need to make sure everything's captured.
Right, so you have even less than that, what you're saying. Okay.
Yeah, so if there's anything you want, get going on it.
I mean, I keep a running list of, you know, ideas that we've had, so I always have ideas for zoning amendments, but I'm not proposing them right now in terms of, because it's very time-consuming, because my time is limited. But I, I always have ideas of what, you know, especially each town meeting, if something doesn't pass, it goes back on the list.
With the comprehensive plan process coming up here, we're going to be asking people for their input in all those different areas of the plan. Many of those discussions are going to lead to goals and recommendations, probably for, maybe for, you know, bylaw changes and all, which would then be in the annual town meeting, which is much better attended and everything. So I mean, I've kind of, I had, I know there's some issues that we, we probably need to address, but I think that if we keep it open for town meeting articles from the planning board, we risk cannibalizing people. Like we, we risk separating it into a, if we try to simultaneously develop the comprehensive plan and have a few articles out there that we have to discuss week after week, it, unless it's like something desperately urgent that needs to be done, I think we should postpone any, any proposed zoning changes until the comprehensive committee has met and then make it happen in the, in the spring, when we have much better attendance and everything. I think it's better for transparency and everything if we can just have that discussion and have it culminate at a time when there's a full attendance.
So why don't we, for the purpose of tonight, why don't we just add that, just make sure it's an agenda item for the next meeting? And then we can talk about it there if there's any, any hits for that.
Okay.
And town meeting discussion, is that, we're covered for that?
Yes, that's what I wanted to.
And then I, agenda item six, administrative items, so Fox Hill Village application, so that's at our August 13th meeting?
Yes, so we did put out a request for peer review. We did get three responses from, let me see, I summarize. Beta, Beta Group, PSC, Professional Services Corporation, and McMahon Associates. Now, we've, you're familiar with Beta Group, we use them in the past a lot. We have used PSC at least once before, I think it was the Westwood Estates subdivision, so it's been a while. And McMahon Associates, we haven't used before. So they did, I did ask them all to provide a cost estimate based on at least two public hearings with the planning board. Let's see, PSC came in the lowest at $4,900. Beta Group was next at $6,400, and McMahon estimated $12,500. They were the most.
Do we have references from either the other two that we don't?
They did provide a summary of where they've done work before in other past projects.
I don't have experience with the other two, so it's hard for me to make a recommendation.
PSC is who did Westwood Estates?
Yeah, we used Tom Houston. He was there for them.
I don't remember them being a problem. I, I think they were pretty comprehensive for that.
Do we, can we get any figures in terms of what they proposed, the class would be versus what it actually was, for example, Beta? Just to see how close they are to.
How close they are, let me think. They're usually, I mean, I know Betas are usually close because they have so much experience and come into these board meetings and what you're looking for in your zoning bylaw, so their estimates are usually right. But all of them do say in sort of your regulations that this is an initial estimate. If more time is needed, more reviews, additional meetings, then they give us an updated estimate, and then we get the funds from the applicant, so.
When does a decision make, it needs to be made quickly, I would imagine.
Yes, it'd be great if you can make a decision tonight so that we could get them on board for your August 13th hearing. That works well, that way we get the funds and the contract going so that they're here and have time to get you a comment review letter before the hearing and that they're here at the first hearing in August.
I don't know anything about the other two, though.
Yeah, PSC and McMahonis.
Well, they did. Right, so we did ask them to summarize, you know, their experience.
In my line of work, sometimes the best, best proposals, the RFPs are, sometimes it's more experience with the town, two of them have good experience. Dave, do you have an opinion?
Yeah, I mean, we're most familiar with Beta. It's always good to consider others and all, but I think they've done a good job with everything. If I had, if I had to pick right now, I'd go with Beta.
That's what I would too.
I think it would be irresponsible of us just to pick McMahon at almost double. For no reason other than let's try someone new. They haven't given us any reason to say, let's try someone new. I mean, even though it's not our town's money, it is someone looking to do business in our town, so.
I'd want to meet with them in person, too.
No, we don't, you know, we don't have that kind of time. They submitted their best and their best was twice as much. And they, from what I, it sounded like anything more is going to cost you, based on reading their submission. It really didn't, whereas PSC at least said, we'll work with the staff and we'll work with, you know, the applicant. The tenor of McMahon Associates really sounded like, this is, we're just telling you this is what it's going to cost right now, but if you keep wanting us to talk to staff and stuff, that's how I read into it. I was really put off by the 12.5 number.
Bill, do you have a, do you have an opinion on this one?
I don't have all the information, I couldn't get it, so.
Well, I'm, I've been happy with Beta's work. I think the quote is reasonable, and knowing that they come in on, close to that quote is nice to know, too. Deb, do you have?
I guess you should vote, yeah.
They're pretty familiar with our bylaws and whatnot.
Do we need to vote on this?
Yeah, I think you should vote on it.
So how should we vote, just say?
Our roll call, I guess. I guess start with, someone can make a motion for Beta.
And then make a motion to have Beta be the peer review for the Fox Hill Village application?
So we have a motion, we have a second?
I'll second.
So Dave?
Aye.
Deb?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Bill?
I'm going abstain.
Okay, and I'm an aye as well, so four yeses, one abstention for Beta.
Okay, thank you. Also on that topic, would you like to schedule a site visit?
Yeah, that's a great idea.
I didn't know if, I know it's close, I don't know if, if, so August 13th is the public hearing. I expect it to probably take more than one hearing, if you want to meet before the August 13th meeting. Otherwise, if you want to find another time, they told me to let them know when you want to come and we can meet them and they can show us.
Is there a site plan created yet?
Yes.
It seems premature, if you don't have a site plan, to go look at it.
Yes, we do have a site plan. It was electronically, and I think we gave you, we had some, they gave us printouts last meeting, so we do have those, but.
I'd be happy to go next week. But if you're going to send out a date, a few days ahead of time.
I won't be around until the week of August, after August 5th.
Okay.
So I could do later in the week, August 5th?
I should be back by the 7th?
Yeah, like the 7th could work for me.
Is that a Tuesday?
The 7th is a Wednesday. And Bill, do you have, are you available the week of August, or August 7th to Wednesday, Wednesday, Thursday?
I can commit, I don't, I, I don't have my calendar.
Sure, yeah, that's fine. And then Dave, for you?
The 7th would work.
So for David's.
I think it could work for me.
So, yeah, what works?
But if not, this is something we could go do on our own, right? I mean, we can't talk about it once we're there anyway, so.
True, no, it's true.
Okay, so if you, we'll look at August 7th, is there a timeframe you're kind of?
Yeah, what time works for you, is it?
I'm pretty flexible.
Yeah, anytime, lunchtime seemed to work last time, did that work for you?
It works, yeah, lunch works for me.
Okay, all right, so we'll work towards noon on Wednesday, August 7th, but I'll check in with the applicant. And if you can't be there, you can visit on your own?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, thank you.
And then just approval of minutes for June 11th. So we have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
A motion and a second, so roll call, so Dave?
Aye.
Deb?
Aye.
Bill? Bill?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well, so minutes are approved.
Thank you.
And then the upcoming meeting is, uh, meetings are listed here, August thirteenth, September third, uh, September seventeenth, October first, October twenty-second. So motion to close?
Oh, Mr. Chairman, I forgot one thing. Um, the, um, select board, they haven't, um, voted on all the appointments, the reappointments and for the, um, subcommittees that you had talked about on May, uh, fourteenth. I had sent the recommendation. Um, the pedestrian bike safety one, we had recommended Brian and Bill beyond that. They would like to ask you to only, um, send or recommend one member.
So it can, it can be Bill.
Okay, is that okay?
Bill, you fine with pedestrian bike and safety?
They.
I can do that, unless you want it.
They usually meet on, um, Thursdays, seven thirty to nine. They, it's once a month, the fourth usually.
Do, do you have a conflict on Thursdays?
Yeah, Thursday.
Yeah, so I'll, I'll stay on it.
Okay, that's okay, we, okay.
Yeah, the reason why I was looking for an alternate is because sometimes I can't make it and it's, and it's, then they don't have their quorum.
Okay.
Yeah, so we'll keep it as may.
Okay, all right, thank you. So I'll send that back to them and then they, I think they'll be looking to make appointments at their next meeting.
Great. Thanks, Abby.
Motion for this meeting?
Do a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Dave?
Aye.
Deb?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Aye for me.
Thank you, Bill.
Meeting's closed.